I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Abington School Committee here in the Middle High School Library on Tuesday, August 27th at 7:00 PM. The meeting is being recorded for Abington KM for viewing later. I'd like to ask everybody to stand for a salute of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Welcome back to everybody on another school year. To start off, I want to ask the hearing of visitors, does anybody here would like to speak at this time? You just state your name and address, please.
Kevin DiMaggio, 29 Orange Street. So, good evening and welcome back as well.
Welcome.
Tomorrow's a big day for you guys, I'm sure. I came in tonight to broaden the agenda with something I wanted to bring up and hopefully get into next meeting's agenda. Took a little backstory, Alex Porus and myself, we went to school together at Braintree. We were the same age. We graduated together from Braintree High and through high school, Alex had a tough time, so he always needed help and he always looked for guidance. And he got that help and he got that guidance and he graduated. So fast forward to now, and Alex was a school resource officer. He was able to help a lot of people here. Basically, this is where he did the most help, is in this building, and this is what he loved to do. At a point where he thought, well, not even taking the sergeant's slot at the time because he wanted to stay as a school resource officer, because that's how much the kids meant to him. But, I don't want to keep, I don't want to be long, I'll keep it short, but would like to see if you guys would place on next meeting's agenda to rename or to name this school after Alex. I know we did talk a little bit about it, looking at the possible name of the Alex Porus Memorial School Complex. That way it doesn't go into a middle school or a high school, it's just the complex itself. But, I would ask for your support and ask that it be placed maybe on the next meeting's agenda so we can have a further discussion and go from there.
Okay. Well, first off, I want to, I think I speak for everybody when I say how much our sorrow is still with you, Deb, and we appreciate you coming tonight. We appreciate the support of the entire police force. It's not something that historically has been done, the naming of the buildings, well, school buildings, anyway, that's all I can really speak to. The last one was Frollo, about 70 years ago. That said, we can talk about, and it is something that, we can talk about placing it on the agenda for next month, September 28th, I think, is 29th, around that timeframe, you'll know. And the agenda will be public when it is, and if it's on, it'll definitely be discussed and hashed out. I don't know, anybody?
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Deb. Is there any other public comments? Okay, moving along, we have the reading and approval of records. The first set was from special meeting we had after our last one to designate a school committee member to serve on the Town Manager Search Committee, so that's the one page. I'll just look for a motion when you get a chance. Can they? Can Deborah Jackie? Okay, okay, okay.
Even though they, yeah.
All second. All in favor of approving these minutes?
Aye.
Excellent. And then the second set is the, from our regular June meeting on June 18th, which feels like it was forever ago. So, after the committee gets a chance to just look these over, if we could get a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Great, thank you very much. Moving along, the next item, report of the subcommittees, Social Emotional Learning Subcommittee, Ms. Abrams and Ms. Augusta.
Well, rock, paper, scissors. No, I feel like we are, I love when we meet. We are having a great time in our subcommittee, having a lot of good conversations about kids and what's best for kids, and thinking of our last meeting that we had, we talked a little bit about opening day and some of how the social-emotional thread would be in our opening day activities and some of the professional development that's happening. And I think our next topic that we're going to touch on is just to kind of revisit conversations about homework. What am I missing? Jump in.
Homework. Else, we talked about the 5th and 6th grade, the...
Class meetings.
The class meetings.
Oh, yeah.
We're going to revisit that, like the health talk and stuff that they get.
And that reminds me of the other, we talked about the 5th grade having maybe some type of transition.
Oh, that meeting, yeah.
Meeting.
Couple meetings.
We talked about the 5th graders, a suggestion was made to find ways to better transition students from one school to the next and kind of keeping that ramp where every school is connected. And where the 5th graders come here to this big school, maybe not the whole class meeting that takes place at Woodsdale, whole school meeting, but was it the guidance counselors?
And the adjustment counselors.
And the adjustment counselors are going to visit the 5th grade classrooms and have topics that they talk about that are relevant to 5th graders, like what do you do at lunch when you can't find a seat, or locker stuck, or just some of those things that we forget about sometimes, or we take for granted. So we're, that was one change that we're looking to make a little stronger for this school year, so looking forward to that.
And then they'll follow sort of the cycle of a year, because in a school, you know, the start of school is different than the winter, which is different than the end, there'll be different topics that come up depending on the timing of the year.
And then just the only other piece for the subcommittee that I just want to mention is, it was really nice that, we didn't know, obviously, what Superintendent Schaefer had planned for the opening day, and some of you have seen the video that's on YouTube. And there's a theme about like not giving up on our students, and then the CPAC sort of ironically had the signs that are made at each of those schools with things like, you know, just positive things that so matched what it was that the school community, the message that the school community was giving, and it really was this amazing thing that came together for the opening of this school year. So I feel like our students are going to feel really supported.
Yeah, it was a great, great way to kick off the school year, so. And if you haven't seen the video, I think we've all seen it, like definitely.
Yeah, definitely something you want to check out if you haven't seen it yet.
With your tissues, I didn't have tissues over the period.
It was great.
It was good.
So that gives me a chance to publicly thank everyone that helped in making that, Abington High School senior Ariel Emboy, but then all of the people that participated in sharing their stories, their bravery that it took to share those messages, and then we have one of the starring people in the video right here at our table. At the end, I want to thank them for their participation in that, so couldn't have sent that message without them, so. And then at our meeting, I gave our members of that subcommittee a copy of the book that each of the teachers got along with, which talks about, it's directly at social-emotional learning. And all of our teachers and our paraprofessionals got these books at the opening along with a bookmark that has our social-emotional learning mission statement on it, so I gave each member a copy of that. It's not a homework assignment, but I want to make sure that you had it for your perusal.
And the book has a really nice message, and I don't know if you want us, for people who didn't get the book, it's nice to know that every one of our staff members received a book that sort of just talks about every student having two backpacks, one that you see them wear to school, and then this sort of invisible backpack that is their life story or whatever experiences, good or bad, that they've brought with them to school, and how we just have to take all of that into account when they arrive along with their school supplies. It's great.
Thank you, both of you. Superintendent, I think that video was great, I echo that, so thank you very much. Next up, report of the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Dr. Fedorowicz.
Welcome back, everybody.
You too.
You too. I have this all set up. I'm going to try my best to be careful about that.
That's okay. Wes Rich.
Yeah, he's hopefully getting a nap, long as he's here all weekend, and he'll be here bright and early tomorrow.
I'm going to give it a minute. I'm going to go ahead and get started, though, because it's the beginning of the presentation anyway, so you should have the presentation in front of you. So, like I said, welcome back, and we're looking forward to a really great year. We've had a great kickoff to start, and now I'm going to talk a little bit more about the professional development we had here today. In this presentation, I'm just, on the agenda tonight, I'm giving an overview of grant fund allocation and distribution, draft of professional development offerings that we have for this year based on survey and feedback from spring last year, a glimpse into the summer work that's been going on, and curriculum fun fair that we have coming up in October, and your Facebook page, every teaching and learning. There we go. All right, so first up, grant fund allocation and distribution. So every year, Abington receives a variety of grants focused on Title I, Special Education, Student Academic Support, and Professional Development. Overall, you can see here our major grants that we get through the course of the year, and I'm not going to go through every single number, I think you have them in front of you, but I'll go over the highlights. So for Title II-A, which is our Teacher Quality and Professional Development, and for Title I, which is Support, this is mainly used for staff salaries, support staff salaries, paraprofessionals, and professional development. So unfortunately, we're down a little bit this year by approximately $27,000 compared to last year, but I think we're in a good position this year for our professional development and allocations. For Grant 94142, we're up $16,857. For our Sfed Early Education Grant, we're up $375 from $9,700 to $10,000. And from our 309 Student Support and Academic Enrichment, we're down a little bit by about $1,700, but we still have covered that breadth of change for our September Professional Development and Social Emotional Learning. Any questions on grant allocation?
Sure. Can I just ask you, what is 94142?
I'm going to turn that over to James.
Yeah, absolutely. So that's a federal grant, and that's provided so that school districts can provide high-quality special ed services to students, and so the spirit of the grant is that they don't want any school district really cutting corners in terms of the quality of special education, so they provide this kind of sizable grant so that we can do our best to support students with disabilities. So the way we use it is that we pay for a considerable number of salaries, and over the past year, we've actually increased the number of paraprofessionals so that we can create more inclusion opportunities, so that helps with this, and we also use a good portion of professional development as well.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, it's really helpful.
And please, publicly correct me if I get this wrong, my memory is, is that that's the federal government making a promise under IDEA back in the 70s, and they funded about 20% of their commitment from back in the 70s.
Yeah, yeah, that sums it up.
Ballpark.
Yeah, sums it up.
So...
Because their commitment was 100%.
Correct. Correct. But that horse left the barn in the 70s.
Okay. Thank you. There's explanation.
More than one, no.
Sharon, I have a question. So, what we've gotten for 2020 is less, why is it less? Is it because they're just awarding less money, or because we applied for less? Like why, is there a decrease?
So we, in a sense, we apply for the same amount, but really, the government, the federal government has a specific formula, and they, what they do is they take, it's kind of a complex formula, that they look at, the federal government looks at all the states, they look at all the schools within the state, and then they allocate the amount of funding to each school based on need, based on demographics, based on population, things like per pupil spending, and so it all gets mixed into that formula.
Okay, so it's like a formula they determine?
Right, so we actually really don't have much of a choice in what they give us, but it tends to, it's, I mean, it's generally in the ballpark most years, but it tends to fluctuate, and this year, we tend to be a little bit on the downside, but we're creative.
Very good.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to professional development. So we talked about this in the spring, and this was a culmination of our teacher feedback survey, our teacher leaders, our administrators, and this is just a draft of kind of what we put together during the summer, so we can have a glimpse of what we want to do during the course of the year. Now, this, it tends to be somewhat fluid, only in the sense that if there's a state initiative comes out, that comes out, or a federal initiative, then sometimes we're going to have to have some flexibility to tweak this. But, as you can see, our focus for this year, based on our results from last year, focuses predominantly on social-emotional learning, differentiated instruction, approaches to play in pre-K, workshop model strategies at elementary. We have Teacher Learning Alliance coming in at Beaverbrook and at Grade 5, and some writing workshop strategies for Woodsdale. We also have instructional technology, predominantly at middle and high school, and we have a lot of department-based and NEASK at the high schools. So department-based is a lot of our vertical conversations among content and also with strategies, and it's really nice to have that availability. Today, as you can see across the top, we had Jessica Minnichan come in today, who is BCBA, and she talks about social-emotional learning and some strategies that teachers can use in the classroom as a toolkit for different types of behaviors or emotions within the classroom. So it ties in really, really nicely, and it was a great kickoff with what we did yesterday in the video and all of our signs, so we're really making an effort to move this forward and have everybody involved. And so far, the feedback today from what I got was really, really good, and Jess was great because she provided actual meaningful takeaways that teachers can start right away in their classrooms tomorrow, and they haven't even met the kids yet, so it's some things to look for and what to work with, so that was really fantastic. Any questions on professional development for this year?
I heard it was an engaged group today, so that's good.
Thank you, yeah, everybody seemed very excited. Okay, on to summer work. So, over the summer, teachers and administrators are always super busy, it's not just a time off, but there's always work being done behind the scenes to get ready for the students to come for teaching and learning. So just to give you kind of some high-level samples of what we worked on this year, first was the Math Invisions, which is our elementary math program, and this, we had teachers from the Math Task Force that was created last year in grades 1 through 6, work with four other districts to align the Invisions curriculum to the updated math standards. So we bought the curriculum about five years ago, which was aligned to the standards, and now that the state has made some updates, we need to keep up with that and keep aligned. And we did a lot of collaborative work with four other districts to get that up to date, get some supplemental materials, get some extensions and interventions. For social studies, last summer, the state came out with the new social studies standards and said that we need to implement them this year. So we had a social studies task force, and they worked very hard this summer to create curriculum guides and get some new curriculum and instructional materials to be ready for the new social studies curriculum, to make sure it was aligned, we had some shifts among grade levels, and there's been a lot of work since last year and into the summer to see where the shifts are, and teachers had really good conversations and shared a lot of their materials, which was fantastic. There was some co-teaching curriculum work, grades 5 and 6 conducted their curriculum work and established classroom procedures and group activities. And then in other subjects such as pre-K, they developed curriculum for our three specialized classrooms. And in courses like, subjects like PE Health, ELL, ELA Math, and Music, they updated the curriculum guides, added new instructional materials, or we had some new courses that came on, some teachers wrote that for the summer in preparation for tomorrow, so they're ready to go. So, as a district, we're continuously working to keep things up to date in our curriculum instruction and assessment, keeping it aligned, having that collaboration, and so we're just going to continue to move forward with all of that. Any questions?
Just had a quick question about social studies in K to 4. What are they using? Do they still have a textbook, or?
For right now, we have the time for kids, we use that, we have more supplemental types of things, for example, grades 3, it's still Massachusetts, but that's something that we're going to need to update, just because the books are a little bit older, not so much that information changed, but if we can get more updated textbooks and that, and some more diversity in that would be great, and also some primary sources that's online.
What about the classroom libraries for literacy? Are you, will you be ordering any more for library? I'm just thinking about like the integration piece where K1, 2 may need some read-aloud material, or like to tie in, what are you using for materials to match the new standards? Like when, in the grade levels that don't have a textbook, per se? That might just be a way to bring in a little more content.
So we have, we do have our library books, we did get more books this year. In grades 3 through, 3 and 4, we got about 300 books per teacher for the classroom, so we're looking to integrate that more, but we don't, it's not like a, like our Invisions math curriculum, or the Wonders, or the Science, it's more, we work collaboratively to get some of the curriculum materials and work together. Do we still need some updates to that? Yes, because they just rolled it out last year, so we're going to have to continually work to keep that up.
Thanks.
And then, we're going to do something new this year for our Curriculum Night. So we're going to have a Curriculum Fun Fair this year, we're pushing it out just a little bit later. For the past two years, we've had the Curriculum Information Night, and this year, what we want to do is we want to increase parent and community engagement and a little bit more outreach. So we're going to provide a variety of touchpoints that parents can choose from on October 2nd for our K through 6 Curriculum Fun Fair. The format's going to be more of a fair atmosphere, and it's going to be here in the middle school cafeteria, like it was last year. We're going to invite students to help with the fun fair this year, and we're going to have a few different options. Options include being able to talk to students, teachers, and administrators to get more specific information about curriculum, instruction, and assessment, or parents can go and sit and look at the support materials and ask kind of more general overarching questions about all of the curriculum. So if you want to hire a viewpoint, then you can circulate around the fair, if you want to sit and talk to teachers, or administrators, or students, and find out a little bit more in-depth, or see how things work, then that's an option as well. So it provides kind of more of a customer service model, so you'll have more of a bigger spectrum of information, and it's going to be different in that the teachers aren't going to be upfront telling you more about the curriculum and the format. So it's more options based on what you want to see, and hopefully more engagement as well, and more participation. So that's going to be October 2nd, it's going to be here from 6 to 7:15. It's the fun fair, and the doors are going to open at about 5:30.
Yep.
All right, and then last, just a little plug, the Facebook, everything you tune in, learning in Abington, so make sure you stay tuned into that, and please share it, and if you're just feeling great updates, it's going to be on. Any questions?
Thank you.
I think I should have said earlier that I think it was your idea to get this to everybody in the district, so, good idea.
It was at a conference, and it looked like a fantastic book, and Peter thought it was a great idea, so.
I still do.
So we're looking forward to the kids coming back, you know, the summer is over and fun having them back, so.
They're excited.
James? I think he's next, right? Is that right?
Yes, he is, yep, thanks, Sharon. Yes, now, we call the Director of Student Services, Mr. James Robbins.
Hi, everyone, thanks for having me, nice to see you all. So, what I want to talk about is some updates to our service delivery model. So what we're like constantly thinking about in this Student Service Department is how can we better meet the needs of students with disabilities? So in all buildings, in one way or the other, we're either trying to refine or revise the way we're meeting those needs. So I'll start, also, I'll just kind of give a quick overview of our efforts at each building. So first, to start with preschool, something you should all know is over the past five years, the population of students in the preschool has doubled, and so that created sort of a, an environment in the preschool where, you know, they were essentially at capacity. And the way, the way new enrollments work at preschool is that when they turn age 3, they become eligible to join, and we really don't have any awareness as to when a student will be 3 years old and eligible to join. So throughout the year, a general feeling at the preschool is like, okay, we're essentially at capacity, and someone could turn 3 any day and have considerable needs, and we're going to be tasked with meeting those needs. So with really that realization, last year, we added an additional classroom. And then just as we went through the year, we continued to like really refine what we wanted that classroom to be, and so going in, so this, this all started last year, but going into this year, it's essentially refined, it'll be, the new classroom will be staffed by Catherine Spaziani, who is, has a great track record with our students and parents in the district, and it'll essentially be what's called a partial inclusion program. So it's designed for students who have considerable social, emotional, and learning needs, who require more direct instruction than can be offered in our traditional classrooms, but not so significant that they must participate in our sub-separate program. So it's essentially intensive instruction that has a flexible format to allow them to spend as much time with their peers in the traditional preschool classroom, but also making sure that they get really intensive targeted instruction from Catherine Spaziani. So we're all excited about that. Melanie Savicki had kind of pioneered the program for us last year, she'll be going on to our Beaverbrook next year, and like I said, Catherine Spaziani will be taking the reins, and we're sure that she'll do an excellent job. At the Beaverbrook, we added an additional therapeutic learning center. So where we were at is that going into, at the, at the end of the last school year, we were to have seven students enrolled in that program, and then coming up from the preschool, we're going to be three additional students. And seven students already is considered kind of on the high side for a TLC program, and then the idea of 10 students, I think, made us all uneasy, because the thing is, if a student's enrolled in a therapeutic learning center, they're needing a lot of individualized instruction. So looking at the landscape and realizing that we were going to have a 10 student in one program, we realized that we needed to kind of rethink things. So we've introduced another classroom, it'll be taught by a teacher named Nora McMichael, who will be new to us, and she ran a program like this in the Winter Public Schools and comes to us on a very, very strong recommendation. So the way the TLCs are essentially organized is Nora will be teaching students, all the upcoming kindergarten students, and half the first grade students, and Tanya Menelakis, who had a great year with us last year, will be teaching another portion of first grade students and the second grade students, so essentially Tanya will be doing sort of the upperclassman, Nora the lowerclassman, so to speak. And so these students participate in traditional classroom... And so these students participate in traditional classroom morning meetings, and they also participate in the electives with their, with their same grade peers, but they get their intensive academic instruction in the TLC program. So we're excited to see how that goes this year. So at the Woodsdale Elementary School, so this is a school that relies heavily on the co-teaching model, and they do a really nice job of that. And so they'll be continuing to carry that model forward in the upcoming year, but they'll continue to sort of like review best practices with respect to co-teaching. Because there's really this sort of, there's this part of co-teaching that's kind of more art than science, in terms of getting it just right. And what I mean by that is that the idea of co-taught classes is that you've got a general educator and a special educator together, so that, so that your students with disabilities can be appropriately integrated in these classrooms. But because you've got two, like, you know, really high-powered teachers, the risk you run is over-supporting all students. So you're not holding them to the, like, the highest possible standards, or you're providing too much support, which may, which may hide like challenges that the student may have. So, so, you know, that's, that's a challenge that a lot of co-taught classrooms run into. So they'll just be continuing to like reflect on how things are going, and continue to reflect on best practices in terms of like co-planning, co-instruction. So it'll just be, they'll be in a reflection cycle. So also some exciting things going on at the secondary level. So at the middle school, last year, with the support of some professional development from Christine Rodriguez and Eli Kestner on fifth grade, had its first year of co-teaching. And that, that ultimately was a successful project. And so next year, that'll be continuing a fifth grade co-taught, co-taught strand, but we'll also be expanding it to the sixth grade. And something Sheri had mentioned is that those educators spent some time over the summer, really kind of collaborating, so that they be prepared to really work in sync when, when the year started. Additionally, something that was started last year was this Compass Program, which is the idea, which is a program that exists for a select group of at-risk students who have social, emotional or behavioral challenges. The program has a therapeutic space that kids can go to on an as-needed basis, and it'll be staffed by two teachers. And what we're kind of, the way it's evolving this year is that it's also going to have a skill-building component. So many of the students who are connected to this program will participate in one or two classes at the tail end of the day, and either one of the Compass Program teachers, or our school adjustment counselor, or our school psychologist, or one of our social work interns, will work with them in terms of like group therapy, motivational coaching, and just teaching them coping strategies. So, so that they're just, can be more independent throughout their day, and just more regulated when they're in their classes. So we're excited about that program. And last up, at Abington High School, we're adding a new special education liaison. So this makes it so that each of the liaisons will have smaller caseloads, so that they can give more individual attention to more students. It allows more flexibility in their schedules, so that they can go into the general ed classes, and make it so that a student with disabilities who may struggle to really participate in that environment will have that extra support that they're, that is needed. So we think, just with the addition of this liaison, students with disabilities at the high school will, will have more success. Two other things to talk about.
I'll just ask a quick question, sorry, about the, two slides back, the Beaverbrook Therapeutic Learning Center. I just, I was curious, how do they, do the students, like the seven that you gave an example, is that, are those second graders?
It's a combination of first and second graders.
First and second graders. So when they transition to Woodsdale, do they, do they, what does that look like?
So fortunately, we have a strand. There's, there is a therapeutic learning center at the Woodsdale, and it, and it's more sparsely populated in comparison to the one at the Beaverbrook. There are less kids in it. What, one thing you see when you look at like special education from a district-wide point of view is there are essentially bubbles. You know, there are pockets of, of students at various grade levels. And it just so happens that in the, in the, going to this year, the first and second grade have just a high percentage of students with, who have disabilities with more severe needs that needs this type of programming. So, so as a result of that bubble, it made it so that our TLC program was essentially oversaturated. So, so that, oh, sorry, sorry.
No, I was just thinking like, in, at some point, does the therapeutic learning center ever move on, like as that bubble, as the bubble of first graders, of second graders become third graders down the road? Do they?
Yeah, so, so that's an interesting question. So, so without having the exact numbers in front of me of, of who's in the third and fourth grade TLC, what may come to pass is that those students who are in fourth grade now will go into fifth grade, and they'll be serviced by the TLC program there. And so the TLC program at Woodsdale will be totally suited to absorb this upcoming need.
Yeah, I was just curious like how that worked.
Yeah. And, and what is nice is that we do have like that TLC strand in every building. So with a student with that level of need, there will be that support for them, which is good. It's just, like, I think, sorry if I didn't even thought, but essentially just the sheer number of students at this level made it so that we were, we were challenged to truly meet the need without adding this program.
Thank you.
James, I don't have a question, but I just want to make a statement, I guess, comment based, because what's on the screen right now, I've lived two of those. First of all, with the early education program, you mentioned Catherine Spaziani, and she's amazing, so she'll be perfect whatever you have her do, especially this kind of thing. And last year, my son lived the third grade co-taught. That whole setup was incredible, and I'm looking forward to the fourth grade co-taught this year. So I've heard great things about it as well, but I just wanted to, I've lived those recently, so I just wanted to let it be known.
Oh, yeah. Well, yeah, thanks for the, thanks for the feedback, uh, thanks for the feedback. Yeah, those, the programs that your students, that your children were slaying are definitely really high quality, and we're lucky to have those, those teachers here, and they do excellent work, so thank you for saying that.
No problem.
All right, just two more quick items before I cut off. So one of which is to just mention that we've wrapped up our extended school year. So the purpose of extended school year is for those students with disabilities whose disabilities impact them in a way that if they were not to receive summer instruction, their skills would regress. So, so IEP teams are at that, are asked that difficult discussion when they need, which is just that, basically, if your son or daughter did not participate in this program, would, would they lose a bunch of the skills they learned in the previous year? And you want to try to prevent that regression, because when they go into the next year, you don't want to spend your first eight weeks of the new grade teaching them everything they'd forgotten from the previous year. So that, that's why extended school years exist, and they exist in all districts, throughout the state, throughout the country, as part of the federal IDEA Special Ed Program. So this year, we had 144 students participate in our program. It was overseen by Adrian Welling, who did a fabulous job managing the program. It serves students in grades pre-K through eight. It meets for four weeks, the end of July, Monday through Thursday. It's a total of 75 hours for most students. And students who participate in a sub-separate portion get an additional 32 hours, because the idea is just that their needs are slightly greater, so let's give them more time with the special educators. Also, something that had begun in the previous summer, but was, what we had more students involved in this year, was just that we facilitated participation in the Eager Beaver Day Camp. I, I think it says something different there, but, in, in the Eager Beaver Day Camp, which you all may know, it's associated with the, like the Island of the Pond. It's kind of a town institution. And so there are a number of students who have what are called social pragmatic challenges, which is just, their, their social skills are weaker, and they need some authentic experiences and, and feedback in order to just strengthen their skills. So we had a handful of students with disabilities go to the Eager Beaver Summer Camp with a power professional, and that power professional would consult, consult with our special educator to know what that student needed to work on. The student would just have, yeah, for the students, it just feels like fun, but we know, like as adults, we've got secret instruction. So, yeah, so that went really well.
And I can plug that, too. I can plug that, too, living that this summer. So that was fantastic. The powers did a great job. I mean, I know they're not part of the district, but the counselors at the Eager Beaver Program are amazing, if any of them listening, or anybody who instructs them or listening, they're amazing as well, so. Great program as well.
Yeah. Great, well, thanks for saying that.
No problem.
And very, very last thing to talk about, is just a few updates from our special education parent advisory council. So we, we are blessed to have a really thriving CPAC in that, the people who are on the board are just very committed, thoughtful, creative people. And so it's a really nice moment for our CPAC. And so, you know, if there are people watching at home, or anyone in the audience who hasn't, who isn't a part of it, we really encourage you to, to attend the meeting. We have our first general meeting scheduled for September 16th in this library. It'll start at 6:30, and they tend to range anywhere from, you know, an hour to two hours. You're welcome to, to leave at any time. And it's, it's an opportunity to get feedback to me, because I, I'm at those meetings, but more importantly, it's, it's a place for you as a parent to, to meet with other parents who have children with disabilities, to talk about your experience, to, to share ideas, to talk about any other resources that you may use. So, and the meetings are, are very nice. You should also know that the CPAC has an operating budget, and they used some of it this year for a really, I think, kind of thoughtful and touching initiative, where you may notice on the campuses, the school campuses around town, there are "Don't Give Up" signs. So, so the signs have one of, say, have one of three sayings. It either says "Don't Give Up," "You Are Worthy of Love," or "Your Mistakes Do Not Define You." This is part of kind of the, like a national "Don't, Don't Give Up" campaign. And the CPAC wanted to have these out for open houses and day one for students. And it really, it coincides very nicely with the social emotional initiatives that we're doing district-wide. And also just kind of communicates that, in that sense, that idea of, you know, community is important, that each individual is taken seriously, that, you know, you, like, you're not alone. And that the messaging is just really great, because the staff have been happy to see it. And so that, we have those things to CPAC. And one other item that, that I know I personally am really excited about, and hopefully parents at home are as well, so CPAC also uses some of its budget to fund speakers, which offer, you know, helpful guidance and wisdom to, to our parent community. And this year, and the date, it starts on a slide, but the date is October 17th, and it'll be at 7:00 PM in our, in our auditorium. And this will be well-advertised beforehand. We'll make sure to have flyers out, and it'll be on Facebook pages and so on. And the speaker's Lynn Griffin, who's both an educator as well as a RN. And her topic is, the title of the presentation is "Proactive Parenting by Heart: Embracing Social/Emotional Learning at Every Age." And what this presentation, I think, will accomplish is that all, all of our teaching staff are really reflecting how can we meet the social/emotional needs in our classrooms. And so a lot of staff are doing a lot of reading, attending presentations, working with curriculum to just enhance their skills to meet the social/emotional needs. But you, but the idea is that parents really are our partners in this work, and some of you maybe, may know these topics very well and be able to support your children at home, whereas some of you may feel a little lost with this issue. So what's great is that Lynn Griffin will be going over a lot of social/emotional concepts, so that you as parents can really support what we're doing in schools, at home. So use some of the language related to a lot of the social/emotional concepts, such as like how do you, how to manage your own emotions, how to be aware of your emotions as they happen, how to, how to read a room in terms of like the social rules, and how to make just sort of ethical, you know, responsible decisions. So, so hopefully it'll really enhance skills for, for parents at home, so that we can partner as best as we can to support students' social/emotional growth.
I don't think so.
Thank you. I love all the things you're doing.
We need to vote it, because there's not much to...
James, we have the homeschool requests in front of us. So, we have in front of us the, this year's homeschool requests. If you get a chance, I'll be looking for, from the committee, a motion to approve the recommended home education programs for the 1920 school year, as recommended by Mr. Robbins in the attachment.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Excellent, great. Thank you. Up next, report of the Superintendent of Schools.
I, I want to express my appreciation to the people that I work with over the last especially week. They have been standing on their heads, making sure that we take care of kids and get them onto school buses and get them registered. I am so fortunate to work with this group of people, because in the last, Felicia's going to talk about this, too, I don't want to be redundant, but I believe we've had about 150 bus registrations in the last week and a half. We've had about 35 people, families, 35 students register for school in the last two weeks, two and a half weeks. And for, you know, whatever their life circumstances are, or whatever the situation is with any of these, and each individual's different, you just don't want the, the children to have to suffer by, by, by not having the bus tag, or, or not having a placement. And so, I mean, it's very long days, and it's long hours, it's, it's after hours, and it's just bending over backwards to accommodate people. So I should start with that, because this last week's been really taxing on people. So I'm just very fortunate that they put kids first, and they do it for them. And I can't name them, because they are the people that are administrative assistants at the central office and at the building level, and there, there are people, other support people that have been helping them along the way. There are too many people, I wouldn't be able to capture them all, so they'll start there. Also, our maintenance and custodial crews, I'm proud of the way that our buildings look, and the pride that they take in making sure that we're ready to go. We have a breakfast with them, and I say to them that, you know, people are dropping off just the most important thing in the world to them, and when they leave, and when they arrive and they leave, they want to feel like people actually care about our buildings and our students, because it sends a message. It's the first impression. And they do a great job for us. We've also, we already talked about Rich Bajkowski in the technology office, and the core, the group of people that are employees and our students, like Cam, who spent their summers making sure that the technology's ready to go, because it's a hell of a thing to have this perfect plan for kids, and then it fails because the technology doesn't work. And then you have to shift and, and dance, and then you've, you've missed an opportunity to make an impact. The highway department, the police department, the fire department, and the building department working with us to make sure inspections are done, we're ready to go. You will see, you know, you've already seen those blinking flashy things that slow cars down that the police have out there. You will see officers out and about, because what happens is people find these commuter lanes that they take all summer, that they find convenient, and they disobey all the speed and traffic ordinances. And then we put our kids out on the sidewalks and on school buses, and they continue to disobey those ordinances until they see somebody with a badge and a gun and flashing blue lights, and they slow them down as they cut through town. And they will be there, and they will do that tomorrow. The health department, I think you're probably aware that we've had a mosquito infestation of, with, with two different diseases that, you know, one of which is life-threatening, and the other one is just, you know, debilitating for the rest of your life. And so the health agent has been working with us. We've done spraying, and I know that in the next couple of weeks, we will probably be shutting down, we'll put a dusk till dawn curfew in. We are waiting for that sample in our area and the health department to tell us that, that those mosquitoes are present in Abington. But they don't know where the town line is between the towns around us and our town, so I'm assuming we're going to have them. But, well, you know, I'll give you more information on that when it's available, but I can't tell you how helpful the health agent has been at helping us with that. Transportation and busing department, I mentioned just the number of volume we've had, of people getting tags in the last week. That will continue into the next couple of weeks, and that's something that is always a challenge. And they, they work hard to accommodate everyone. They're out looking at bus stops, they're out looking at routes. And they do it out of, out of a sense of responsibility to take care of our kids. We also, you know, I talked a little bit about new registrations. So I don't want to be redundant with the other things you've heard tonight from Sheri or James, or the things you're going to hear about from Felicia. So there's a lot that I could talk about that I won't. But something you need to know is you have an active, vibrant and thriving community in Abington, and that's a good thing. One of the things that that brings is a lot of people. We have people registering like we've, like we haven't seen historically in, in, in decades. We've got, we talked about a larger freshman class than the senior class that was leaving Abington High School. I have numbers for you in terms of what we're up as of yesterday, but they keep coming. And so I'll continue to watch these numbers and track these. In terms of an area that we already knew, we were, we were a little concerned about at the end of last year was grade six. We had 27 students. We had 27 students at the end of last year in classrooms in grade six. And that's been the jackpot grade for students that have registered over the summer. And there was no way to know that when people moved to Abington, they were bringing sixth graders. But now those class sizes are now at 29.
The current sixth grade class.
The current sixth grade's at 29. No way to plan for that, and now that we have that in place, and we didn't, we couldn't have known that until this last week because the sixth graders were signing up this last week. I mean, it was these last couple of weeks where we really saw the major increase. Once those placements are made and once those teachers are in place and the students start to create a relationship with those teachers, it's not healthy to add a teacher. It's a bad alternative to add a teacher mid-year and have students moving around asking people if they want to move to the new teacher. Our teachers have unfortunately handled numbers of 29 in a classroom before. It doesn't mean it's right, it doesn't mean it's what we want, but students, you know, have received a good education in those rooms. And so that's where we are as of today. One of the hopes that we have is we do start a little bit earlier than about half of the districts in the area, and we will have students, those same people that aren't planners will be, you know, we have our own people that aren't planners that are gonna leave us in this next week as other school systems open. So we may see a little bit of migration out in the next week, a net out, because we're still gonna see people coming in. So tomorrow, we're gonna host a party for about 2,100 kids, and grades one through 12. So we'll be gassing up the cars and charging up the cell phones, and we'll be flying around the district everywhere we can be every moment. And it's exciting because, you know, working with those teachers, having them come back and feeling their energy, not only on that opening day where we did that welcome back piece, because that, believe me, that energy was alive and well in that room, but then the energy they brought to the professional development today, I mean, they were, you know, cars in parking lots, seats in saddles before the start, they were working away, they care, they work hard. And the next, and the best phase that makes it even more exciting is when our students come back. And then you get, you know, you get chills about what we do because those teachers do the most important work in the world in those classrooms. It's our job to support it. All of the things that I mentioned that we've done, we talked about tonight, are our effort to support them in that work. And I'm excited about the 1920 school year. Questions?
No question, just a comment. You mentioned the police department, and I only get to drive and pick up my children one day a year, which is like the first day of school because then I'm back to work. But something that I always look forward to is knowing that like tomorrow morning, especially when you go down Glenwood Way for middle school drop-off, it's almost like, gives me chills, like that there's many, I just know we'll see many of the police cars, like in many different spots, and some of our officers at the door greeting kids, and I just, I always feel like very grateful when I drive down and around. And so thank you to all of those people who show up for us, for our party, and just as a way to welcome back and say that like we care about you. And it just, it means a lot to me as a parent, and I'm sure it does to others. And I bet it means a lot to the kids too, to see them there. It's exciting.
Thank you. Moving along, before, actually, before I move along, I want to congratulate Felicia Michelle on completing her PhD.
Oh.
So now I'm gonna call the report of the assistant superintendent for business finance to Dr. Michelle.
Thank you. Still sounds a little weird, but thank you. Thank you, congratulations. Thanks. You got me all like...
No wonder you're not napping.
Thank you, Chris. I'm with Peter. I share all of Peter's sentiments and thank yous for all the help that we've received throughout the summer to get us ready for today. And when the students and staff walk out the door the last day of school, the summer staff is coming in, or the year-round staff is coming in to get us ready, literally the day after school ends, until today, to get us ready for today. So I share the thank yous to that extensive list of people that I'm not gonna repeat for. I would like to give you an update on bus registration and busing. This year, Colleen Greenlaw has taken the reins over from Carol Carney, who did the bus routes for many, many years. And we also started using a computer program that a lot of districts use to route our buses and our students. So the bus tags look a little bit different this year, but Colleen followed a lot, mostly followed the routes that had been established, especially for the secondary level. There's been a lot of questions around elementary routes that, the same questions we get every year, that last year the stop was here, this year it's someplace else. And as you know, at the younger grades, we have, we try to get closer to your home, you may not be in front of your house. And as they get older, we have neighborhood stops with greater distances for students to walk. So every year, as younger students enter and older students move on to the next school, especially at Beaverbrook and Woodsdale, the stops absolutely may change. This year we've had, we did, we made online payments more prominent in our constant contacts that went out, that were numerous throughout the summer. And they, we had, as of August 22nd, we had 181 people pay online, and there's been at least another 30 in the past week and a half. And last year altogether, we had 133. So that has been an option that a lot of people have taken advantage of. As Peter mentioned, we've had over 150 registrations in the last week and a half, and over 200 in the last two weeks. And that is also one of our biggest struggles. And notices are sent out at the end of the school year, April vacation, we send out the applications, we send out a number of constant contacts, but there are many, many registrations that happen the two weeks prior to school. And part of what that does is routes are made based on who's signed up for the bus, and so then we're making changes to the bus routes, which is challenging. We will continue to remind people as early as we can to get their bus applications in. I also want to make a huge reminder that buses will run late this week and next week. They'll be late picking up and they'll be late dropping off. And the reason for that is if every family takes a picture, which you should, of your child getting on the bus, and that takes 30 seconds, and there's 40 students on a bus, that adds up. So buses, and if you're late on the bus, you're not considered tardy at school. So just be cognizant of that, that buses coming in the morning will be late, and going home, especially at the Beaverbrook, they take attendance on the bus before the bus pulls out to make sure that every, that students are on the correct bus. So that takes a little bit of time. And the bus drivers also don't know the parents or adults that are picking up the children at the bus stop necessarily, so that takes a little bit more time. So please be patient with our busing. Any questions?
You have your own video, we have your own video, middle school video. Were you gonna talk about that? Sorry, sorry, sorry.
I just had a quick last question, just from my own parent knowledge, and maybe other people wondering, but so if you live more than two miles and you're in elementary school, you automatically get a bus tag?
Correct.
As the year goes on, if those people weren't planning on taking a bus, do the bus stops change at all, or do they stay exactly the same?
Sometimes the drivers may, well, they'll skip a stop because...
Because nobody comes up?
Because nobody comes up. And then, so that's a really good question, and we've had that, that you didn't take the bus all year...
Right.
The bus doesn't stop anymore, and then all of a sudden, just call. Call the school, and we'll let the bus company know to start back up at that stop.
I was just wondering about that, because I know, like even my street, for example, I was like, I don't even know anyone who takes the bus here, and they don't, but they get the tag?
Yep.
And so I'm like, I wonder if as the year goes on, like, how it would all play out, but like, you said, the other side of that is if they decide they want to take the bus at any point, they just call.
Yep.
That's great, okay. Thanks.
Sure. Status on summer facility projects? It was a, it was a busy summer. We were moving into a new building or anything like that, that seems like so, so long ago. But I do need to thank Jason Lynn and Lance Hammond, all the custodians and the summer custodial staff for the work that they did. As I said, the day school gets out till yesterday. Some of the highlights were the new parking lot at the Woodsdale. I'd like to thank UKW for their assistance in that. Using in-house staff, we were able to rebuild bathrooms at Beaverbrook, new tiles, new stalls, and they look great. We completed the customary room cleaning, floor waxing, filter changes, cleaning and checking the unit vents, and putting everything back together for the start. So I think you'll agree the buildings look great, and they're excited for the students to come back. The new building project, the new building, which is entering our third year, is just about wrapped up. We're still, as I've reported before, we're still waiting and working with the contractor on a solution to our rainwater retention system. So that's something that's ongoing, and we'll continue to be working with the contractor around that. There's a couple of different ideas about that process. And the final, final part of the project will be next, after school gets out in 2020, will be the resurfacing of Glenwood Way. So that'll happen, like I said, when school gets out for next year. Questions on that? The next item I have is a consideration of a revised lunch charging policy. The food service program in Abington provides a nutritionally government-approved breakfast and lunch daily to all students wishing to take advantage of the program. And as you may know, there are three options, free lunch, reduced lunch, and full-price lunch. And the change that we're looking, that I'm proposing tonight is as for students who pay a reduced, for a reduced lunch or a full-price lunch. I'm proposing that no student be denied a breakfast or a lunch. No alternate, in the previous policy, they could get an alternate lunch or breakfast, and they'd be charged. Now, this policy is proposing that they get a regular lunch. There's also the, in previous policies, there was a total dollar amount, and then they couldn't get the alternative lunch anymore at the middle and high school level. In this, we're saying that there isn't a cap on how much can be charged. We won't deny anyone a full-price lunch, I mean, a lunch or breakfast. That being said, if you don't have money on your account and you don't have cash, you wouldn't be able to purchase à la carte items, such as a second lunch, or an ice cream, or some other thing that's not part of your lunch. The work of notifying families will be done through the director of food service and through the office. So a child who comes through the line in grades K to six will not know whether they have a debt or not to be paid. The only time that they would be talked to about that is if they tried to buy an à la carte item, in which case they've been asked to say, "I'm sorry, you can't get that unless you have money on your account or cash." And I was at the meeting this morning, we talked about this with the food service staff. So the, the, let me just check, make sure I go through everything. So the balance of this, just so you, just so there's an understanding, is the food service program is subsidized by the United States government. And the government says that a food service program can't have any bad, quote-unquote, "bad" debt at the end of the school year. So if we run about $600 to $700 in student debt at the end of every year, and the federal government then says, "The school department budget needs to pay off that school debt," regardless of whether the program is making money or not making money. So it's a weird funding piece, but that's, those are the rules. So our concern is that without having any, like, you know, guidelines around how much money people could charge, that we're gonna end up having more debt in the food service program. So next spring, I may come to you and say, "We have now accumulated $3,000 in debt, or $2,000 debt, $1,000 in debt." And, but we'll see how we do at that end. The food service director and his, the food service program is actually making money now, which a lot of programs are not, which is great, and he will be using part of a staff person to help with communications with the families through email, phone calls, letters, and there may also be conversations with school administrators or guidance counselors to see if there's an issue within the house that we don't know about, that we should encourage them to apply for a free reduced lunch.
So I have a question. So you said, K through six, they won't be denied?
K-12, they won't be denied. Grade seven through 12, they may say, "You owe money. Don't forget, you owe money."
Okay, so that's what I was gonna ask. So they can, the students will know, like, so K through six, they'll only notify the parents?
Correct.
But...
Seven through 12, if you don't have money, they may tell your student that they need to put money in there.
But they could still get, they could still get a lunch?
Correct.
They just can't get the extras?
Correct.
Okay.
Felicia spent a lot of time, Bernie spent a lot of time talking about how that communication goes, about, you know, you can't get the ice cream, you need cash for that.
And we decided that the idea that you need money on your account or cash isn't saying, "You owe money, so you can't have it."
Yeah, and just getting away from that guilt and shame, like, I think that I remember being in elementary school, like, "Tell your parents you need money." And it's like, oh my gosh, like, you know, to carry that weight home, it's just if we can take that burden off of kids who have other stressors and who's around when someone says that. So that's really great that you guys are talking about it.
Will they still tell the high, I mean, will the parents still be notified at a high school level, they'll only be telling the kids?
Oh, yeah, no, no, no.
Okay, so, okay, all right.
No, we're telling, we're telling. And parents, and I, we also strongly encourage parents to use myschoolbucks.com to put money on the account, and if you don't want to pay the fee that's associated with my school bucks, send in a check or cash, and it can be put on at the register.
We don't get that fee, that goes to the bank.
That goes to the bank.
The transaction fee.
Correct.
Can I ask you a question about the school bucks? Somebody had recently brought up that their child wasn't going to the public schools anymore, and they were gonna go, you know, to a different school, but they weren't getting a refund. Do, is it kept, the money, or, because they said that the money's kept, like, it's not refundable? Do you know if that's true?
I can't imagine that that's true. I don't think you can get it through my school bucks.
Right.
It would come through us.
Oh, okay.
So if you pay for a bus, for example, and then are mandated, or then the school department refunds the money.
Okay.
My school bucks will refund it.
Okay.
I'm pretty confident. But if they've moved out of the district, I strongly encourage them to email or call Bernie Darcy and close out the account, and then the school department then sends them.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions?
No.
I think they'll be looking for a motion to approve the revised lunch charging policy.
I love this policy.
Me too. Me too. I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Paul and Sarah?
Hi.
One last thing, yep. Update on the middle, high school pickup and drop-off procedures. When students, especially fifth and sixth grade parents who have not been into the middle high school complex, come in, there's questions about, "Where do I drop off?" Or, "It's raining, I want to drop off right at the dorm opposite the tennis courts." And so this summer, we added, or the end of the school year in the summer, we added two items that we hope will get parents to pull all the way up as far as they can to get more cars into the queue and get more students able to be dropped off. There's a traffic bucket that says, "Pickup, drop-off, park here," so you pull all the way up to that. Bow, thank you, not bucket, bow. And there's also a green line painted on the driveway. Pull right up to that. Please, it really helps get, especially the middle school cars around, both for pickup and drop-off more quickly. And the second thing, I have to thank Justin and Abington Cam, Matt McCurtin, and Sarah Soares. Thank you, for putting together a video, a pickup and drop-off video, and Officer Lynch. They did a great video, if you haven't seen it, there's been over 1,200 hits, so, or views, and it's how to drop off your student at the middle school. And I think that's also very helpful for those students and parents who haven't come into the complex before, don't quite know where to go, or how to travel.
I think another important point would to be, like, hopefully to reiterate tomorrow, maybe having a teacher outside, letting you know as soon as you hit that corner and turn, that's when you can start dropping your kids off rather than waiting until you get all the way to the door, because that's really what makes the line stagnant, and, you know, everybody's just sitting there waiting, so...
Can you explain that to me again? I don't, I just, I want to... I, I don't, I just, I want to understand.
You don't have to, like, you don't have to, so here's the door.
To the middle school?
Right to the middle school. When you go around the backside. When you go around the corner, right as soon as you go around the corner, you can start letting your kids off.
After the chimney, seeing the doors. Turn the doors?
Do you make the turn behind the building?
After you make the turn.
Can I try?
Yeah, the tennis courts.
It's kinda like if you drop off at Beaver Brook. We get, you come into the traffic circle, ten cars line up. All at once, ten cars empty and then the next. So in the middle school, let's get that first car up to the green line, get a whole row of cars emptying out from that green line all the way back to the corner where you turn from behind the building.
Why am I struggling with this?
Go behind, like past the turf, behind, you park right behind the gym. Once you turn that corner.
Like where that little rotary?
Tennis courts.
This is the tennis courts. Yeah. Yeah, right at the little rotary.
But people wait till they're like the first person to get up to the thing instead of knowing you can drop like ten cars.
So all of the people from the middle school door, all the way in that back parking lot to the corner can all exit.
And then you can, and then you can drive away once your child has safely exited the car.
That's good information. Cause I'm guilty of what you just said.
Well, and, and it's funny because sometimes, like the person in front of me, then I'm thinking, "Everybody's gonna be driving away." And then I'm suddenly stopping because, you know, somebody is waiting. Yeah, to just drop off right at the front.
That's actually why we have the traffic pattern the way that we do, so that, you know, kids can get off and then the cars can-
Come out.
Come out, rather than having two-way traffic. That's why we got one-way, so you can leave when you're ready.
Right.
You know what might help? Just an idea for tomorrow is to move some school bodies, people who work here down.
Right, that's what I think.
Down. And like, "Hi, you can come out here." Because I, I feel like, I wouldn't-
I've been saying that for years.
Yeah. I feel like you wait to see likes of school personnel.
I'll tell you what happens, honestly, is at the beginning of the year, there's a lot of staff out there. We're moving them. Then you have the first rainstorm. Everyone wants to get, all the kids want to get dropped off at the door. And then it kinda, and then we have to go back out and kinda retrain the kids.
Yeah, no, this is good information for me.
Parents like me that just say, "Get out."
Got it.
And the same, and the same holds true, I will say, on the high school side. And there's fewer parents dropping off at the high school side, so it's a, it gets a little less, it's a little less congested. But again, if parents can pull all the way up to the, to the training room door, the bathroom doors and drop off there as opposed to right outside the fitness center, that's helpful as well.
It's gonna be the best year yet, you just watched. I'm glad this is gonna get everybody known.
I have my raincoat, I have my ready.
So let me ask you, so in the front of the school, once the buses have all pulled up, you can then drop off in the front of the school?
The sign says is-
Not when buses are present.
So when buses have left and school has started, then you can drop off in the front.
Okay.
And before they get there?
And before the middle school buses get there. So after the high school buses drop off and before the, but that would be early, before the middle school buses. It's after the middle school buses have left, then you can-
So like if you pull up and there's no buses, you can pull up there, but say there's like the late bus. Like what if you're there dropping off and then the late bus?
You can't pass, pass a bus, really.
Right, like, but if you're already there, like, like to drop off and the bus pulls in behind you. Okay. Just, just wondering, I know people do that.
But even sometimes-
I'm not usually the one to drop off or I'm the picker-upper, so I just, but I have some people.
Right, and sometimes that bus sits there for a little bit, cause they, I think, make sure that there's nobody else in the bus. So I'm one of the people that sometimes go to the front, cause I'm a little behind every girl. And so I just, if there's a bus there, I definitely don't go in the line or drop off.
And there, there's also the opportunity to find alternative areas to meet your children after school or drop off. You could drop off up on the boulevard, make them walk down. You could meet them in other places too, cause it does get pretty congested.
Very good. Before you close it out, I just want to say how awesome the fields out the front look and on the side. And I love the fence around it and it's good to see people playing in there. Sad to see the geese in the front, but there aren't too many right now, so I was gonna run out there. Try to scare them, but-
Yeah, you're actually helping us because we can make that public service announcement. If people don't know, there are these fake coyotes that are marginal in how effective they are.
They all seem scared lately.
Just hanging with the coyote the other day, I was like-
We, we removed it for tomorrow, for the beginning of next week, as the kids come. Because if they haven't, we don't want them to think there's a, you know, coyote out there. So we'll put it, it'll come back if needed. But I've, I've noticed these front fields last year had less geese on them. I think because we were using those fields so much with kids, they found other places to go. Probably up at Riley Field.
Thank you.
No problem. Establishment of the next school committee meeting date is going to be Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, right here in the library at seven PM. I'm gonna let you take a couple, there's a couple of informational items. The first one is the MASC, MAS joint conference is in Hyannis again, the first weekend in November. As we get closer, we figure if anybody's interested in going, I'm gonna let you-
Sure, just, we have a communication in the packet. So there was some talk over the summer about special municipal employee status. And so appreciate the people that, that filled out that paperwork. If you didn't fill out that paperwork, it's okay, because the Board of Selectmen has granted the entire school committee the special municipal employee status, which is, is just some protection around conflict of interest. And then, we had a letter.
Yes, I gave it to them.
You have a letter, I just wanted you to know about, we've got a good relationship with Representative Sullivan and Senator Keenan. And the letter you have is, is an effort to control flavored tobacco, which is preying on our kids. And if, if there's a, if there's a hell, there will be tobacco executives in it. And so you know it's an epidemic. It's gone, this was, we did this over the summer and it's gone to a legislative committee on, on health in the Massachusetts Senate and it's, that's where, that's where it is now. Just wanted you to know, because it's an ongoing battle and we're gonna continue to chip away at it.
Okay, thank you. Also in, in informational items, there's a page with our school committee meeting dates for the entire school year through June twenty-twenty. So the next one, September twenty-fourth, as I mentioned. Also, there's a list of the subcommittee assignments as well as school council that were assigned the end of last year, if anybody didn't have them. One thing I do want to mention about school council, and this has been communicated to school, school administrators, that we all have jobs, other things going on, where maybe we can't make it to their things there. And that's understood, maybe you're assigned to one that the time of it isn't gonna work. I asked Superintendent Shafer to reach out, let them know, maybe there's an alternative way to get the information you may have missed. Maybe you can, they can dial you in during their school council meeting. If you can't make it, you can be on the phone though. So just some things, I know those, the time is set by the schools, which is fine, but they are aware that it may, if we can't make something, we have other things to attend to at the same time, so. Finally, dates to remember, Monday, September second is Labor Day. All offices and buildings are closed. Well, first of all, tomorrow's the first day of school for students. There'll be no school for students on Friday, August thirtieth, but Bill Administration is open. Okay. Tuesday, September third, the early education program in kindergarten begin, so expect delayed buses again at Beaver Brook. Wednesday, September fourth, the Greenway Boosters meeting here at seven PM. Sunday, September fifteenth, two things, Jeff Coons' Mario Road Race at Woodsdale and the Abington Music Parents Craft Fair here. Monday, September sixteenth is the CPAC meeting that Mr. Robbins mentioned here in the library at six-thirty. Thursday, September nineteenth is our early release day for students for in-service professional development. Not on here, but September twenty-eighth is a Saturday. It's Abington Education Foundation's first fundraiser. It's Parents Night Out at Players in Rockland. I do not know the time, probably seven, eight, something like that.
After the kids go to bed?
Yeah, after your babysitter shows up.
I think that date of the fun fair happens within this, when's the fun fair?
October sixth.
Okay, that, that was-
Right, seventh?
Second.
Second.
I wrote those two dates down.
October second.
So October second's fun fair. And then as Mr. Robbins also mentioned, the CPAC parent event. Thursday, October seventeenth, and that's not in the library though, right? That's in the auditorium?
Correct.
Okay, that'll be in the auditorium at seven PM. I think that's all. There's a number of informational items regarding hirings and such. But that was all I have. Anybody else, any of the community members have any questions? Yes, Donna, can you give your name and address, please?
Dr. T V five oh one Summer Street. I just want to thank you all, the summer school, the extended school year. The kids did do interviews and I don't know if anyone saw the YouTube. I was a little fast with Mr. Shafer's, cause that was my daughter. Chris Coyle, Mr. Robbins, Mr. Shafer, there's a lot of them. Felicia did one and they were awesome. And you guys were awesome and you did great with the kids. My daughter kept trying to leave me, sorry, but you guys were so awesome.
I had, I had more fun than cheated.
So they came up really awesome and that was something that was done at the extended school year. And it was really nice, so I want to thank you guys for taking time off to do that.
Yeah, thanks, Donna, thanks for bringing it up. Yeah, it's the second, second year of the program, of them doing that, right? Ms. Jen Whitman runs it, yeah, I was one of the interviewees, so. I think I messed up the date too when I showed up, but they worked with it, so. Thank you to Jen Whitman for running that. Thanks, Donna.
You guys take your time off, your kids loved it.
It was fun, it was great.
Thank you. I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn at this time.
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
All second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned, thank you.